All right, I guess we'll go ahead and get started, the meeting. The City Council for the City of Brookshire, Texas will hold a regular session City Council meeting on August the twenty first, twenty twenty five, at seven P M. in the City Hall to consider the following. We have prayer.
Father God, we say thank you for another day. You blessed us to see Lord. We ask that you come and sit with us, Lord, and lead and guide us as we go over this agenda. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to your side and for the betterment of this community, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the men and women of the United States of America, including the Republic for which we stand, one nation of the God and the physical, liberty and the best.
Ms. Corner, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Richards.
Present.
Mayor Proten Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Stamps.
Present.
Alderwoman McDate.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Public comments per Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one zero zero seven. The City Council may not discuss or take action on any items not listed on the agenda. Each member of the public wishing to speak must sign in before meeting the meeting, which is limited to three minutes. And I have the first speaker is Garcia Nizoyu. Did I pronounce that correctly? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
All right. Mayor Robert, my name, and dear councillors, my name is Garcia Anzau. I live at thirty-two seven oh-three Oak Eyre Lane, Brookshire, Texas. Um, seven, seven, four, two, three. And I'm here today because yesterday I walked into the office. Um, I was trying to um, talk about um, a program that I lead. And I was invited to come and speak for three minutes um, today. And I want to talk about empowering Brookshire through Service Now Training. And uh, I want to say very quickly what is Service Now. So imagine a platform that powers the operations of Fortune five hundred companies, hospitals, universities, and government agencies. That is Service Now. It's the backbone of modern digital workflows, helping organizations uh, hand I T services, um, H R, customer service, and more. Efficiently and uh, at scale. Now, what does Service Now represent uh, for the I T sector in the U S? Service Now is one of the fastest growing enterprise platforms in the United States, trusted over seven thousand and seven hundred global customers, including nearly eighty percent of the Fortune five hundred. Analysts rank it as a leader in I T sector management and enterprise information. And with the push towards digital information, demand for Service Now activities keeps climbing. Now, why turning matters? Here's the reality. There is a severe talent gap. According to the last report in the U S market, alone, I mean, U S market alone needs tens of thousands of qualified Service Now professionals. That often start at eighty to hundred thousand per year. With expert, with, with expert, with uh, experienced consultants earning one to six figures. And by the way, I'm one of them. So what is missing?
So you have one minute.
What is missing right now? So, um. So, um, there is, I mean, here's what Brookshire has achieved from the lead by partnering with us, a company called Eva to offer, hands on Service Now training to individuals in our community. This isn't just training, it's a direct pathway to high paying tech careers that can change families' financial features, scale uh, resident, means stronger household ownership, and a stronger local economy and occupation for Brookshire as a hub for opportunities. And lastly, why should Brookshire um, sponsor or invest in this kind of uh, activities? I believe that by sponsoring this in sharing.
So your time is up. Sorry.
Do you have a card? You can leave.
Yes.
Give a card with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ellen Lusher. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Um, my name is Ellen Lusher, I'm a resident of Glenbrook, my husband Guy and I have lived there for over thirty years. And um, we're concerned about the development of the properties surrounding Glenbrook subdivision. Um. We don't know what it's going to be, being so close to our secluded little family back there. Um, we're just, we're just very concerned. And um, I would like to encourage the City of Brookshire and Geomalva Properties to consider, instead of developing it for profit, maybe working as a coastal prairie conservancy as one of the last green spaces that City of Brookshire has. That's all I could suggest. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guy Lusher.
I was just introduced by my wife. My um, my own reason to be here right now is to express a hope that whatever, whatever happens to the property that's in question, you know, Geomalva uh, properties or development, is above board and that the landowners and citizens get a chance to listen to it. And our everything is, everybody's on the same page in terms of knowledge of what the plans are. So that's, that's the one thing that I wanted to express, a wish that we all know what's with the plans are at some point in time.
Thank you.
Regina White. Did you sign in to speak, sir? Or you just missed?
I signed in.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Moving on, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of regular City Council meeting held on August seventh, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on August the seventh, twenty twenty five, with corrections if any.
Okay, and also discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of special City Council Budget Workshop Meeting held August sixth, twenty twenty five, and August thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the special City Council Budget Workshop Meeting held on August the sixth, twenty twenty five, and August the thirteenth, twenty twenty five, with corrections if any.
I second the both of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we have a presentation from Ace Hometown Hardware.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So today we have here Mr. Phil, who gave a brief background on um, what the project um, did tell us. He does have this project, and he has multiple facilities throughout uh, the area. And uh, what I provided to you are just a rough draft image of what that project looks like.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
So I don't really know why I was supposed to speak here, but, so.
Oh, okay.
Oh, does it battery?
So, I met with Ace Hardware on this deal, and cosmetically it was supposed to face I T. But I took in y'all's consideration of that little narrow road up in the front there, which is South Street. And that would be if let uh, bad traffic gain. So, we, I got to flip it, and we're gonna face it towards Seventh Street, on that big wide street.
Sir.
And the last go is where we're wanting to unload the trucks. And that is also a big wide street. So nothing will be on three fifty nine.
Okay. Yep.
You all have any questions?
So you're, you're saying it will face Seventh Street?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, okay. I was looking at the vision, and the vision was right here. Okay.
I mean, I'm getting down to the, meeting with the Water District, the engineers are and stuff, to get all that drainage pit out. And I think they've come up with doing an underground detention there to suit all the water drainage needs.
All right, well, welcome to Brookshire.
All right, thank you.
Can I help, sir?
Thank you.
All right, so we had another presentation for Gilmardo, Gilmarlado Properties, but they did not uh, attend tonight. They're not here. So uh, we also have next a public hearing uh, on the proposed tax abatement agreement with Grunfos C B S Inc. In a reinvestment zone named City of Brookshire Reinvestment Zone Number Three. So at this particular time, I would like to start the public hearing at seven twelve P M. Okay. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, at this particular time, I would like to close the public hearing at seven thirteen P M. Next is old business, discussion and action to approve placing a home at thirty-two twenty-four Robin Street, Jose Aguilar. Good evening.
I have requested this paper to have the permission to set in a home in my landlord. I want to consent to set it in the landlord. It's a red house, and it measures twenty-eight by forty-four. The landlord address is thirty-two twenty-four Robin Street Road, Brookshire, Texas. I need the assurance that I will be able to send my home to have a resident in the Brookshire Foundation. Will be um, set on blocks if permitted. I will follow the procedure and ordinance of the permits as needed.
Is everything in order?
Uh, they're, probably started uh, some of, uh, some of the projects, there's a folder, um, just waiting for people to resolve for today, so they can proceed. Uh, they're starting, they're engineering with uh, the, the steps and everything planned for the driveway, um, the landscape, and then the housing, and the other parts.
Okay. And.
And the floodwater, the kitchen is offered, being.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve placing a home at thirty-two twenty-four Robin Street. With all the restrictions and applications, everything as processed, has been approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, discussion of possible action on Resolution fifteen oh two, directing the mayor to execute a tax abatement agreement with Grunfos C B S Inc. Can I get a motion on that? That is the uh, what I just read for the uh, hearing, for the hearing, yes.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution of fifteen oh two for Grunfos C B S Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number ten, discussion and possible acts to approve a notice for a public hearing on the proposed destination of a reinvestment zone with the City of Brookshire for the purpose of commercial industrial tax abatement under chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code for Ace Heart Hometown Hardware.
Make a motion that we approve the following that was read.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Eleven, thus discussion and possible action to approve a notice for a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, so this is Galvamaldo, they were moved from, uh, they were removed from the agenda to be added to a future, future uh, agenda, there's no action. No action on item number eleven. Twelve, discussion and possible action to approve an interlocal participation agreement with T A S B Energy Cooperative. Dr. Batista.
Good evening again, uh, Council Mayor, as what you have in front of you is the Energy Cooperative, um, interlocal agreement with Tasby. We um, brought um, Mr. Vance with the byboard a few months ago to provide you all with some information. What we're doing is bringing this forward. This is a non-binding agreement, and it allows us to um, seek additional electrical um, provider through N R G, and then potentially seek a lower cost for fuel for uh, the fleet that we have here at city. And so what this letter is, allows us to move forward with the process.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an interlocal participation agreement with T A S B Energy Cooperative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, thirteen, discussion and possible acts to approve, approve a site marketing agreement with Diamond Communications, Dr. Batista.
Again, yes, so um, we brought byboard, we had a discussion, the mayor and Ms. Lyons and I, they um, we had discussion with Diamond Communications on, on, on the coverage here in, in Brookshire. And so what this allows, Diamond Communications is to market to the carriers, Verizon, A T and T, and uh, T-Mobile, to improve our cell service here. If they do buy it on, on one of those properties that, that the city owns here, then uh, potentially a lease agreement down the road. Uh, but we are, for right now, it's just a site marketing agreement, so Diamond Communication can market our city properties to the, to the carriers. Another nine, non-binding agreement.
Okay. Any uh, any discussion?
No, sir. I make a motion that we approve the site marketing agreement with Diamond Communications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Fourteen, update on upcoming city events and festivals, Ms. Dunn. Good evening.
Um, just here to provide a few more updates for happenings we have in Brookshire. Um, in your packet, there is uh, some information there, but I will read it for the public as well. Um, first thing we have is National Night Out, it's gonna be October the seventh. It is from six P M. to eight P M. Uh, sorry. The location will be at our amphitheater. Uh, we're asking everyone to come out and meet our first responders, um, our city staff and your neighbors. Um, we do have um, family-friendly events for everyone. Um. We will have uh, complimentary hot dogs and nachos and sausage on the stick for everyone as well. The next event um, is our Christmas festival. The first day um, for our Christmas festival is December the sixth, and it will be from six to eight P M. Um, it will also be out here at our amphitheater, we'll be doing the tree lighting, um, have coffee and cocoa, and then we'll do a pajama-themed movie night at the amphitheater. The second phase of that is gonna be December thirteenth, this is the following Saturday. Um, and it'll pretty much run from nine A M. to eight P M. The first portion of it will be um, we're partnering with uh, Brookshire Blessings, and we'll be doing a toy caravan drive throughout the City of Brookshire. Um, the way we did in the past, so we did get a big request for that, so we thank the council for bringing that back. Um, and we are also, after we finish that, we'll come back to the um, amphitheater. Um, again, Family Fun Day, we'll hand out um, any more toys, I think they're also doing raffles. What else? Oh, we are um, catering, having food catered for the citizens as well. Any questions so far?
Um, sounds good.
Um, the last thing I do wanna bring up is just our monthly senior citizen event that we have in. The first one is gonna be next Thursday, August twenty eighth, from nine A M. to one P M. in the convention center.
Sounds great.
Any questions?
Any question, no discussion, okay. Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item number fifteen, discussion and possible action to approve council walk for October eleventh, twenty twenty five, at ten A M., Mr. Nisa Odie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I come to you tonight, my name is Stinise Odie. I'm the owner of Taylor's Playhouse at forty-one eleven Highway Ninety, right by Ro's Fargo. So, I'm here to request the council to approve and ho, uh, to, for an approve, I'm sorry, I'm tired. For an approval to host our second annual cancer awareness walk on October the eleventh. On the agenda, it says nine thirty, but it's at ten o'clock. Nine thirty is just to line up, sign in, get everybody ready to go. The walk will start at ten. And it will be from ten A M. to one P M. Last year, I think we wrapped up. We wrapped up around twelve. Um, last year. So the purpose of this walk is to spread cancer awareness by educating and empowering our community about this important issue. Last year, the town of Brookshire had a fantastic turnout, with eighty-six participants walking from surrounding areas, including Rose Sharon, Angleton, Houston, Rosenberg, Richmond, Madisonville, and Sweeney, Texas. The Brookshire Police did an excellent job um, escorting us safely from the police department to Brookshire Brothers, back to the uh, amphitheater. So, on October the nineteenth, twenty twenty four, we came together, we walked for a meaningful, meaningful cause, raised awareness, and made a possible impact in our community. With council's approval, we're ready to do it again, on October the eleventh, twenty twenty five. And we anticipate even more participants this year. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Odie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a route for you. It does have three routes, same as last year. The um, first route was approved for Highway Ninety.
Thank you. I wanna say that I did participate last year in your council walk, it was very successful, and I have a lot of people that's been asking about it, so. Great event.
Can we decide on which route? Today?
So let's see.
Would you prefer?
I prefer the same as last year.
Okay. That sounds good.
That's route number one, correct? Yes.
We enjoyed it, we. Same route was good.
So, that's not, it's same route as uh, Highway Ninety?
Highway Ninety.
I make a motion to approve a council walk for October eleventh, twenty twenty five, at ten A M. Also, we'd be requesting of the request of uh, the assistance from the Brookshire Police Department to assist with the walk. Using, utilizing route number one.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed.
And I can put the pictures on the back, um, the walk from last year.
I gave a copy.
Item number sixteen, thank you. Discussion and possible action to approve Tonya Spear to use the Brookshire Convention Center for Alcoholics Anonymous meetings.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, thank you for having me today.
Good evening.
Um, since I last spoke with you all, I did some digging on the meetings at other places that are close to here that don't have meetings on certain nights where the highest probability of turnout would be not only from our community, but from surrounding communities, Columbus, Seeley, Fulcher, all the way out in Decaty, Woods Road. Um, and it would appear that six thirty Wednesday nights would be a prime time for an A A meeting. It's in the middle of the week, it doesn't coincide with the Friday night manna house meeting. Um, we hope that the rehabs will also join us on Wednesdays at six thirty. Um, a couple of things that are really important when it comes to A A is that A A, one of our traditions says, "An A A group ought never endorse finance or lend the A A name to any other related facility or outside enterprise, lest problems of money, prestige, and property divert us from my primary purpose, which is to help the sick alcoholic." So if we were to have them here at the convention center, we would, we would put the A A group's name on the inner group website, which is the main website for Alcoholics Anonymous. And it would, I, I was thinking about calling it Breaking Chains in Brookshire, just 'cause that really gets my goat. We're breaking the chains of stigma and addiction and alcoholism. Um, but we can't put anywhere in the convention center, hey, we have A A meetings here. Hey, come on over, we support and we sponsor this, can't ever use the word sponsor, none of that. But it is a fact that the space can be donated by anyone who chooses to donate space. That doesn't violate our seventh tradition, which we have to stick to equally as well as all of the rest of our traditions. Um, so we would prefer a room that has coffee, alcoholics and addicts like their coffee. Um, and we would provide the coffee pot, and the coffee, and the filters, and the cups, and all of that stuff. Um, once the meeting got going and we were pretty solid for about three months, then I would submit a form to the inner group people, and they would make it an official meeting where it was known nationally that we have an official meeting, we would have to create what they call a group conscience, which is a group of people that have to have a certain amount of sobriety, and it's kind of like a committee, if you will. And there's people for public outreach, and there's somebody that handles the treasury, there are bank accounts that have to be opened. So it's very by the book, there's nothing shady about, we're gonna do this strictly the A A way. Because two million people that we know of have gotten sober through Alcoholics Anonymous and remain sober. So the opportunity to help hundreds of thousands of people out here in a more rural area, in my mind, is very, very, very real. So I'm hopeful that you all will vote tonight to donate a room at the convention center for us to have a meeting on Wednesday nights at six thirty.
So are you saying every Wednesday, or like one Wednesday out of a month?
Every Wednesday. Consistency is key in Alcoholics Anonymous.
Okay, um. I'm not sure how that will work, it being a public, you know, facility that people can actually rent out, um, any input?
You know, what?
No, I was gonna say the same thing, 'cause we don't know um, what may take place. Cities should have priority, we'll, we'll have to have priority to it. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't see an issue up until it arrives. And we don't know what's gonna, with some, some, one of the citizens may wanna rent it on that particular day. And so that, that'll, that'll kind of throw your schedule off, and we, we wouldn't know. We can't foresee what's, what's gonna happen, um, and every, committing to that every week is, it's, you're asking for a lot, for um, something that belongs to the, the citizens.
Sure, I understand.
But not that we're not willing to work with you.
Yes, it's a good thing, it's a good thing, don't get us wrong, but we just wanna make sure we, nothing interrupts your schedule, you know?
Would it be more beneficial and more feasible if we did it twice a month, which gave? which gave whoever wanted to rent it the opportunity to have the choice of the other two days, the other two Wednesdays? That way, we were locked in to the two a month on Wednesdays, just throwing it out there, I don't know.
Which is, you know, one thing, and, and again, I agree with council that what you're doing is a great thing and it is needed. We just need to be cognizant that when we make a commitment, that we might need to make another commitment, another commitment. And now it becomes a, instead of a convention center that's rented to many people, it limits the usable time for others, you know? And then there's a matter of cleaning, staff to do different things, so it's a big ask, you know? It's a good cause, but, you know, I, it's just my opinion, may present some problems, you know?
Would, would they have to have a police presence there or?
So, typically, we open the doors thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after.
How long do the meetings usually last?
One hour.
One hour? Okay.
So, if we open the door fifteen minutes before and fifteen minutes after, it's a total of an hour and a half and we would be responsible for cleaning up all of our stuff, putting back chairs, cleaning up the coffee. We would take care of all of that, we absolutely would want to return it after every meeting exactly as we found it. And I would be personally responsible for that.
What if we started out with doing it once a month to start?
Sure.
I'll listen, I mean, that's if council, you know, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
I think that's pretty fair to start off once a month and like everyone else said, they give everyone a fair opportunity to utilize the building as well. And, and then I think my second option would be if we go to the twice a month, we also can look at doing it within that month, so it still give the other citizens the opportunity to be able to schedule events throughout that month as well. We could do it on, basically, we could do it on a month-to-month basis, twice a month, on a month-to-month basis. So, you can't be, we won't be able to book it two months prior, you have to do it the month of. So, it still give the other citizens the opportunity to book up an event if necessary, if they need to.
Okay, so that would definitely limit my ability to put it on the intergroup website because a lot of people, especially when they're just getting sober and they're desperate for a meeting and they're trying to find one in their area and they go to the site and they find a meeting in this zip code and then they get here and no one's here, because we said we would have one. So, I just wouldn't put it on the intergroup site and that would be okay. Cause I have lots of resources to promote it.
And did you say, I'm sorry, did you say how many other organizations do A A. in the surrounding areas? Manahouse and which? Ninety Way.
So, on the intergroup site, which is where the meetings, a lot of the meetings come from, The Orchard has meetings, Sealy has meetings, Fulcher has meetings, two, two different groups. Columbus has one group and Woods Road has about three meetings a week. So, I combined all of those schedules to come up with the night that had the least amount of meetings available without driving into the.
So, it's like everybody kinda rotate around.
Right, correct. So, that's why I went, went with the Wednesday at six-thirty. It seemed to be the most viable with, that's not flooded with other meetings. Cause there's nothing between Sealy and Katy except Woods Group and Fulcher and none of them meet every night. Katy is the only club that has forty-two meetings a week.
How many?
Forty-two. They have them from six-thirty A M. to eight P M. during the week and then the meetings on Saturdays and Sundays.
I, I'll say this is a good start and perhaps someone in this community can see what you're doing that has a building available for every Wednesday night and that will step in, maybe perhaps another nonprofit that can do it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, I'm willing to do it.
Once a month.
Just once a month and get it started and get the word out.
That'd be awesome, that would be highly appreciated.
I think that would help you, that would definitely help you advertise.
Yeah, absolutely, that would be definitely appreciated from the recovery community, for sure.
Is that, whose motion is that?
Yes, sir, it's my motion.
Do you have something to say?
No.
I give a sec, oh, you have something to say? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you.
Bring into consideration, again, staff will have to be here, the police department will have to monitor, all of these things that have to be included in wages and so forth.
Once a month, one hour.
Okay, I think, that's fine. No, you brought up a good point.
I just wanted to be known that, you know, staff will be affected and I can't force them to stay because that's not, that's the cost.
Someone will have to, someone will have to lock up the building.
Okay, we, we need to get that established first. We need to get that established first.
So, do we need to table it and get it established first? Okay, so we'll do that, we'll table it and we'll figure out who's going to do what.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you so much for your time.
All right, last item number seventeen, discussion and possible act to request for approval to declare surplus property and authorized sale of upright piano. So, we have a lot of, a few items that are public works location that have reached this useful life and need to be disposed of. We also have a, a nice piano back there that could be good for someone that needs to be also sold. And so, that's why this item was added to the agenda.
I make a motion to approve, to approve to declare surplus property and authorized sale of upright piano.
My second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yeah, Green.
All right, Dad, I don't think we have any executive session items tonight, so, do we? So, on to future agenda items. Ms. Green?
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Ms. Taylor?
I, let me just say, um, we can bring her back, you think we'll have that information?
Yes.
So, we, I'll update, put an update for the.
That it? Ms. Stamps?
Uh, update on our joint meetings with our Brookshire Katy Drainage District, Brookshire Municipal Water District and the City of Brookshire.
All right, I have six. I can vote, right?
You have enough for everybody, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion and possible action for health services contract for City of Brookshire. Discussion and possible action to appoint a board member to the appraisal district board. Discussion, uh, only discussion about apartment complex living conditions within the city. Discussion and possible action for Veterans Day participation. Discussion and possible action to change the open records, open records request process. And then the last one, discussion and possible, actually, only a discussion about requests for homes that have moved into the hundred-year floodplain. Ms. McDay?
I don't have anything.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.